Good evening. Thank you for joining us this evening.
They are so cash flush.
We'll call this session to, 108 regular session order. I'm going to give the invocation and we're going to have the pleasure of flag if you would please stand and join us. Heavenly Father, as we approach the 19th anniversary of the most devastating attack on our nation since Pearl Harbor, remember, remember when we said we'd never forget. We were a nation who mourned and celebrated at the same time. We mourned the nearly 3,000 who lost their lives on September 11, 2001, but we celebrated the unity of a nation, a unity that brought all people together, every race, every sex, every religion, and every creed. It is time to once again remember. It is time to once again mourn. And it is time to once again celebrate. Dear Lord, let your blessing flow across our great nation as we try to unite our country to bring together all people, to cast aside petty differences and prejudices, to remember that feeling we had when we watched as heroes ran into burning towers, as heroes tried to save others in the sky and on the ground. Help us to remember that we swore we would never forget. We ask you this for the whole of our people. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Quick announcements. Following the rules procedure effective January 21, 2020, use of cell phones during meetings is restricted. If you have one, please silence it. Our correspondence, distribution, elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the city clerk for inclusion in the official record. The meeting dates for September are September 1st, a work session at 4:00 p.m. There's no meeting on the 8th. On the 15th is a work session at 4:00 p.m., on the 22nd a work session at 4:00 p.m., and on the 29th a regular session at 7:00 p.m. We have some appointments this evening. We don't have any currently for the City Ethics Commission. We will. We have Hagerstown Housing Authority, Carolyn Brooks, term to expire August 30, 2025. Lou, if you would give us some motions, you can go through all of them.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the following appointments. To the Hagerstown Housing Authority, Carolyn Brooks, term to expire August 30, 2025. To the Historic District Commission, Leslie Allen, term to expire August 27, 2023. The Public Arts Commission with terms to expire September 1, 2020, to August 30, 2020. Alexis Broder, Mary Ann Burke, Sarah Hall, Eliza Lathrow, Cassandra Thompson, and Erin Curtinez. And to the Skateboard Task Force for a term as needed to complete the study, Cynthia Burton, Eric Jones, Joshua Cubby, Ryan McAllister, Stephen McDaniel, Martin Price, Philip Scolaro, and Caleb Shank.
Second.
Second by Shirley. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for nothing. Citizen comments are welcome, to provide comments in person or by sending an email. Don't know if we received any before 5:00 p.m. this evening, Donna?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, okay. Donna, read a synopsis of the, are you going to read the whole thing?
Just a summary.
Okay.
We received an email this morning from Mark Jacob. It's in reference to the Electric Vehicle Charging Services Agreement, which is on the agenda today. And he recommends and suggests that you charge by the kilowatt hour and not by time at the station.
Something to look at, yeah.
And you all did receive a copy of that.
Thank you. Any, and you can if you've signed up to speak. I don't have a list. Now, this is citizen comments on tonight's agenda items. Or anything else you want to talk about? Need to for the public hearing, okay. Okay. No one has signed up to give any citizen comments in person. Is there anybody out here who wishes to do that? Do it now. Okay, we'll move on. Next on the agenda is public hearings, A-2020-03, the annexation of Coal Road Properties.
Hello, so this is our public hearing for annexation case number A-2020-03, annexation of Coal Road Properties. I'm not sure if this is...
Oh, working.
Okay. Okay, so the property to be annexed is 17111 through 17163 Coal Road. The subject properties front Coal Road and are also contiguous with the city's corporate boundary, as you can see in the image here. And the properties are also within the city's growth area and are served by city water. And all the properties proposed for annexation are the Bob's Discount Furniture, Coles, the Christmas Tree Shop, DSW, Ross, and the remaining storefronts in that strip. And then all of these properties are subject to pre-annexation agreement case number WS-2004-03. So as for the acreage and zoning details, the total acreage to be annexed is 34.31 acres. The current county zoning is Business General, and the proposed city zoning is Commercial Regional. And the county zoning is generally consistent with city zoning. And this is our zoning exhibit shown here. So here are some Google Street View images. Again, the Bob's Discount Furniture on the left, and then the Coles. Thank you. Thank you, Scott. And then we have the Christmas Tree Shop on the left, the Ross on the right, and then we have the DSW. So as for the annexation process, the resolution and the adopted annexation plan were sent to the state and county for a 30-day review and comment. We did receive feedback from the state that I provided mayor and council with confirms that the city zoning is consistent with the county zoning. And then I'd also like to enter into the record the certificate of advertisement and the file by reference, A-2020-03. And then as for the remaining schedule, again, we introduced the resolution on April 28. We adopted an amended annexation plan on July 28. And then from here, we would have the approval of the resolution on September 29. And if that was adopted at the regular meeting, the annexation would become effective 45 days later in mid-November. So we will keep the public record open for 10 days if anyone wants to provide any input. And all my contact info is on the screen here.
Any questions for Megan while she's up there? Thank you, Megan. Anyone who wishes to testify for or against? Seeing none. Okay, we'll keep this open for 10 days for any comment. Thank you, Megan. Next up, Landmark Overlay District at Sailor House.
Okay, so this is the public hearing for the landmark overlay at Sailor House. So first of all, what is a landmark overlay? It's a rezoning tool for historic properties. It creates an overlay on top of the original or existing zoning, and it helps to facilitate historic preservation of the property by declaring it a historic landmark. The site details, the property is the Sailor House. It's outlined in this red box in the image here of Kiwanis Park. It's located in the park. The existing zoning is professional office mixed use. And it is a vacant stone house that was built between 1790 and 1810. It was also documented in the Maryland Inventory of Historic Places in 1975. And then in 2015, the Washington County Historical Trust began to work with the city to stabilize and rehabilitate the Sailor House. And then here's another map view showing Kiwanis Park where the Sailor House is located. And then these are some current photos of Sailor House in its current state. So as you can see, it's stone. It's definitely very old. And then again, the intent of the overlay is to preserve Sailor House as a historic landmark in Hagerstown. And the landmark designation is necessary in order to qualify the building for certain grant funding and also to allow substantial improvements in the floodplain. And the overlay would be just for the physical building itself, so it wouldn't be for any of the surrounding land in the park. So the Historic District Commission made a recommendation to the Planning Commission to approve the application for a landmark overlay at the Sailor House. HEC members were in favor of protecting the building. They observed that Sailor House meets the criteria and is in pretty good condition considering its age. And then at the Planning Commission public hearing, we received public input from members of the Washington County Historical Trust that were in support of the landmark overlay. And so Planning Commission has forwarded a recommendation for approval of the landmark overlay to mayor and council. So I'd like to enter into the record Planning Commission file by reference, ZM-2020-03, and the certificate of advertisement. Again, the record will be open for 10 days, so you can submit input. And all of my contact info is on the screen again. And then I did just want to clarify that if the city were to want to remove the landmark overlay in the future, we haven't ever done that, but it would probably just be a similar rezoning process, passing an ordinance to remove the overlay that we had initially passed the ordinance for. Any other questions?
Any questions for Megan? All right, anybody to testify for or against? Martin, you want to testify?
I'm going to yield to Ann and I prefer her to testify.
Thank you, Ann. Yeah, maybe she could say everything, yeah.
That's my pleasure to be here tonight. I'm Ann Aldrich. I work with the Washington County Historical Trust, and I've been before you several times on the Sailor House. We are making progress. They are building the porch. Now, they started this month. And I just wanted to take a bit of time to say thank you very much to the city staff that have helped us and to the mayor and council for considering this zoning overlay. It will be a tremendous asset to us as we move forward in applying for grants. It keeps the control local, which I know we're all really think is very important. I do too. And it also will help significantly in making progress in restoring the house. We discovered, I think it was last fall, that in FEMA's rezoning or remapping of the floodplain, that they included the house in the 100-year floodplain, which brings a whole bevy of requirements for buildings in the floodplain. And this overlay will exempt the historic building from that. And I really, really appreciate your consideration and approval of this overlay. I look forward to working with you to make the building even better. It is serving an educational purpose as we speak, and that's just really exciting. I hope you get a chance to visit soon.
Yeah, thank you, Ann. Marty?
Martin Brubaker, 10925 Hartle Drive, Hagerstown, 21742. I wanted to clarify or elaborate on one thing that Ann said, and that's that the floodplain is really an ironic thing because there were extensive funds spent by developers in a modern office park upstream of the property. The property sits on a plateau. But somehow, when the map appeared, and nobody seems to be able to explain it, and Rodney could tell, we talked to Rodney, and trying to get a change by logic would involve extensive expense with the feds and everybody else. So this is unfortunate that this will allow us to move forward. I'd like to read into the record the letter from the board. "The Washington County Historical Trust endorses the city's application for landmark overlay status for the circa 1800 Sailor House in Kiwanis Park. Approval of this measure is critical to our ongoing efforts to provide for long-term preservation of this notable structure located above the Antietam Creek access point in one of the newest city parks. Financing plans remain a combination of grants, donations, volunteer labor and administration, and a small amount of city staff in kind effort. When completed as currently envisioned, the city will gain a significant asset without the expenditure of tax dollars. Furthermore, the Sailor House is under ultimate control by the city, not other governmental entities. Significant citizen participation efforts in archaeology and historical building trades have already occurred and are resuming as current pandemic restrictions allow. Likewise, WCHD is already moving ahead with other work that must be done by contractors in order to bring exterior sides of the structure most visible from the park into a historical aspect and weather tight condition. We believe that the extensive attachments provided with the city's application more than provide the historical grounds and rationale for landmark status and will not repeat them here. But the city also stands to gain a unique, functional, three-season structure in the near term with potential for future adaptations, especially as plans move forward to make sections of Antietam Creek more suitable for recreational use. We thank the mayor, council, and city staff for their cooperation and support for this project. Signed, Rourke Ickles, President, Washington County Historical Trust." Thank you.
Thank you, Marty.
Thanks, Marty.
It's good to see you.
Yes.
All right, anybody else wish to speak on the Sailor House for or against? Seeing no one, we will keep the record open for 10 days. Anything else for Megan before she sits down forever? Good enough. Moving on then. Next on the agenda is to adopt the minutes, July 7th, July 14th, July 21, July 28, all 2020.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the approval of minutes is presented for the mayor and council meetings held on July 7, July 14, July 21, and July 28, all 2020.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that all consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Your unfinished business, the approval of an ordinance authorizing acceptance of property located at 216 South Prospect Street.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and city council to approve an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of property located at 216 South Prospect with the goal of demolishing the property as determined to be the best path forward for the surrounding community. The property had significant damage due to a fire, and rehabilitation of the property far exceeds the value of the property.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of an ordinance, local conversion district overlay, 202 Howard Streets, ZM-2020-01.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move the mayor and city council approve an ordinance for a local conversion district overlay, including the parking conditions endorsed by the planning commission as on property located at 202 Howard Street.
Second.
Give that to Alston. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Motion carries four to one. Four to zero, I'm sorry. Approval of an ordinance, deed of easement from 114 East Magnolia Avenue.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the approval of an ordinance authorizing the city to enter into a deed of easement for the future reconstruction of a retaining wall for alley 562 adjacent to 114 East Magnolia Avenue.
Second.
Emily gets that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of an ordinance, deed of easement from 118 East Magnolia Avenue.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the approval of an ordinance authorizing the city to enter into a deed of easement for the future reconstruction of a retaining wall for alley 5-62 adjacent to 118 East Magnolia Avenue.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of an annexation resolution, annexation case number A-2020-04, Valley Mall Road Properties.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that the mayor and council approve an annexation resolution for annexation case number A-2020-04, known as pre-annexation agreement case number WS-2005-20, Valley Mall Road Properties, Marriott Spring Hill Suites, Marriott Courtyard, and Restaurant. The portion of the property to be annexed is approximately 4.88 acres in size and is intended to be added to and made part of the adjacent municipal lands.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one. Approval of an annexation resolution, annexation case number A-2020-05, Thomas Bennett Hunter and Other Lands.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the mayor and city council approve an annexation resolution for annexation case number A-2020-05, known as pre-annexation agreement case number WS-2015-07, Thomas Bennett Hunter and Other Lands. Portion of property to be annexed is approximately 21.15 acres in size and is intended to be added to and made part of the adjacent municipal lands.
Second.
Discussion?
I would only say of these two annexations, while I certainly do not agree with the method we have approached them, I do stand by the fact that annexation is one of the best tools that the city has to grow and sustain itself over time.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. Under new business, introduction of an ordinance amending sections of chapter 238 water of the city code.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the introduction of an ordinance to increase the charges for certain water application fees and service charge to establish certain sewer application fees and connection charges to affect various changes with respect to rendering and payment of bills to establish the reasonable fee for meter tests, to revise penalties for violations and penalties of section 238, to establish certain plan review and inspection fees, and to establish certain miscellaneous fees. These charge increases are necessary to meet the revenue required through the water fund in order to keep the fund self-supporting. The detailed application fees and connection charge changes and other changes are indicated in the body of the ordinance. The increased rates and newly established rates shall be effective for all charges incurred on or after November 1st, 2020.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to nothing, introduction of an ordinance to increase certain sewer application fees and connection charges.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the introduction of an ordinance to increase the charges for certain sewer application fees and connection charges and to establish certain sewer application fees and connection charges. These charge increases are necessary to meet the revenue requirements of sewer fund in order to keep the fund self-supporting. The cross-reference to section 238-15 is to make provisions relating to sewer bills easier to locate. The detailed application fees and connection charge changes are indicated in the body of the ordinance. The increased rates and newly established rates shall be effective for all charges incurred on or after November 1st, 2020.
Second.
By Emily, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Approval of electric vehicle charging services agreement with Electric Vehicle Institute Inc.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
I hereby move for mayor and council to enter into an electric vehicle charging services agreement with the Electric Vehicle Institute Inc., whereas drivers of electric vehicles will be charged for the electricity used to charge their vehicles when using the electric vehicle charging stations located in the central parking lot of 14 North Potomac Street, Hagerstown, Maryland. The agreement is attached herein.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of exemption for city code chapter 155 noise, Best of Community of Hope event.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the approval of an exemption from the city code, chapter 155 noise. This exemption is being granted in accordance with section 155-6, variance is the Best of Community of Hope for fireworks display during the fifth annual South Side Community Block Party on Saturday, September 19, from 9:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m., rain day to Sunday, September 20. Fireworks display will be held at Municipal Stadium.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of exemption for city code, chapter 155 noise. Okay. Approval of request for proposals for developer partner for Catalyst Project number three student housing.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move that the mayor and city council authorize staff in partnership and in agreement with USMH to finalize any changes to the priority area identified on the USMH student housing project area map, and then to post the attached request for proposals, RFP, for a developer slash partner for the third pilot student housing project as part of Catalyst Project number three, University System of Maryland at Hagerstown, USMH Expansion Support.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of amendments to the city's water and wastewater policy.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move that the mayor and city council approve the attached amended city of Hagerstown water and wastewater policy. The amendment modifies the policy by creating a preamble which explains the city's overall requirement for annexation as a condition of city water and wastewater requests outside the corporate boundaries, and it provides a definition for new or expanded service.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Approval of improvements on Basil Boulevard?
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for approval of the construction contract and the direct purchases of construction materials from vendors as listed on the attached purchase contract information form. Funding for the project is as presented in the March 27, 2020 agreement between the city and the developer, NP Hagerstown Industrial LLC, and also the April 1, 2020 agreement between the city and the Washington County Board of County Commissioners. The city's share of funding estimated not to exceed 1.5 million as follows: 350,000 in FY21 state highway user revenue, 800,000 in general fund balance reserve transferred from FY20, and 350,000 in FY21 state aid fund.
Second.
Discussion?
Just a note of thanks to both the developer. Everybody sees the physical improvement that's already being made in the area. But more so to the county, to, for the board coming to the table in a fairly expeditious manner and working with the city to make what was a pretty simple decision on the parts of both governmental bodies to invest in the infrastructure to bring the economic return on that investment that'll happen.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the sale of a Pumper, a 2008 KME Pumper?
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and council approval of the sale of a 2008 KME Pumper, also known as Engine 4, to the Upper Pots Grove Township Fire Company, Pots Grove, Pennsylvania, for the sum of $77,500. The Pumper and some equipment are sold as is where is. This amount exceeds the projected market value of a Pumper of this age and condition. Two companies expressed interest in the Pumper but made no offers in the six weeks the Pumper's been for sale. There's a broker fee of 5% for listing and marketing the Pumper, $3,875. HFD staff agrees this is the best possible offer.
Second.
Sounds like it to me. Sounds like it to me. Any other, just any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. City administrator?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a couple of things tonight. Like to remind everybody that this Friday is another Fourth Friday Imagine Hagerstown event at University Plaza from five o'clock till eight o'clock. There'll be two acts this Friday. The first opening act, or the opening act is Zase, which are a local couple that will play at five, and then they're going to be followed by Funkstown native and South High graduate Josh Morningstar, who will play probably about, oh, six thirty or so. Twenty eighteen Texas radio songwriter of the year. He also was a songwriter for the Billboard number one hit song Must Be the Whiskey that Cody Janks sang. So, good kid, good Funkstown family. Know them from their days at National League, and it's nice to have him back home, and I hope a lot of people come out and hear him on Friday night. Saturday, in City Park, the Summer Concert Series continues at the Band Show featuring the Dave Winter Band. That'll start at six o'clock. We've got to continue, we have been able to continue doing these events because folks that have come have been very diligent with mask wearing, social distancing when they put their chairs down, put their masks down. Imagine Hagerstown, we've had good participation with restaurants and takeout. Bring your food and your drinks to the plaza and listen to the music. It's been very successful. It was a great event last month, and I think this is going to be an even better one. So we thank the public for helping us out with that. The pool will be closed the week of August thirty-first through September fourth. It will open back up on Labor Day weekend, and then it will close down after that. Again, we'd like to thank everyone for allowing us to be able to open the pool. We haven't had any major incidents at the pool other than what we're used to in the past, pre-COVID days. Again, everybody's done the right thing and social distance, and we, again, appreciate all the help. And then finally, dining in the streets will occur again on Sunday afternoon, beginning eleven thirty Sunday morning till three o'clock Sunday afternoon. Last week, I came down, and when I was there about one fifteen, one thirty, every table was full that was in the streets. So thanks, everybody, for coming down. Thanks to the restaurants that participated. We'll switch over to Saturdays in September, Saturday evenings, and look for a nice crowd to come there as long as the weather holds out. I think that is it for me, Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. Cheryl?
I will echo the downtown dining in the streets. We went down and every table was full, and the most interesting thing that I found was that it wasn't the typical people that you see downtown. It wasn't, you know, the Chamber of Commerce group and all of us. And so it was individuals that I hadn't seen before enjoying it. So it was a beautiful day, and I was really glad to participate. And I know that I've talked to a couple of restaurants that were equally thrilled, and they would, of course, like to see it all day, but I think we have to start somewhere. So I was very happy with the turnout. Additionally, I learned today that one of the commissioner's daughters has started an interesting project. So Monday is the first day of school and for all of Washington County students. And every story that I hear about what teachers are going to be facing, and the parents are going to be facing, and the students are going to be facing, it's just incredibly challenging for all involved. And of course, our Board of Education decided to, you know, a hundred percent of the students are going to be distance learning. So Commissioner Michael Schmidt's daughter is in protest of this and has organized a, on Wednesday morning at the beginning of school in, at Western Heights, socially distancing and virtually learning from Western Heights in front of the school. So I just find that whether you want your children to go to school or not, you know, for a young person, especially on the day that we get to swear in the Youth Advisory Council, these young kids have voices, and I think that it's important to listen. And I'm not sure of how the survey went. Of course, we're not in charge of the Board of Education's decisions or anything, but I think that it's remarkable. And if there is anyone that wants to support her on Wednesday morning, September third, at the beginning of school, she's ready. That's it.
Yeah, I just want to talk about the Washington Goes Purple kickoff is this Thursday at City Park. NBA, former NBA player and recovery advocate Chris Heron will be speaking. The event starts at six. He will be speaking from seven to eight. Masks are required. Social distancing will be enforced. We will have masks if you don't have one, hand sanitizer, all that good stuff. We're going to make sure it's safe, but his story is very, very, very powerful, so please come on out. It'll be age appropriate for middle and high school kids. Bring your families. And then I wanted to thank Eric Deike in Public Works and the Fire Department and Brooks House and some of the Washington Goes Purple volunteers for helping us hang the road plates today and the signs. It's going to be beautiful downtown again. But I'll tell you, man, today has been super heavy from this morning when the Brooks House girls were going through the placards and saying, wow, I knew this person, wow, I knew this person. And, you know, it pulls at your heart. And then I was late today because as I was driving here from Frederick, there was a lady nodding out who almost got hit by traffic. So I pulled over to make sure that she, one, was going to live, and, two, didn't get hit by traffic. And I say that, but this morning while we were hanging the road plates, six different people came up to us, three in cars that pulled over and three that were walking, and told us about them being in recovery. One person had fourteen years, one person had nine years, one person had six months. And then tonight at six o'clock, I'm on the board of the Phoenix Foundation in Frederick, and we cut the ribbon to Western Maryland's First Recovery High School, which is going to provide an outlet for kids who were struggling with substance use in a safe environment to get an education and to continue treatment. So while today has been very heavy, there really is light at the end of the tunnel, and a lot of people who are recovering and people that are doing work to make sure that happens. So I urge you, if you're struggling, reach out, call your mom, call your sponsor, call me, call someone, and we're going to get through this. Thank you.
Nothing, Krista? All right, I don't have anything either, so good evening. We'll see you next week.